I call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order on Wednesday, May 10, 2023 at 5:05 PM. Board members in attendance are Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, Kirti Hasijah Kaufman, Michelle, and myself, Maya Ravassa. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to the one item agenda anyone would like to request? Okay, great. With that, we move on to our one item agenda. We're here today to determine our response to three complaints. I'm gonna do them in order of when they came in. So the first complaint we need to make a decision about is complaint received February 14, 2023. Would someone like to make a motion? Michelle, I see your hand.
Okay, hold on, Judy's gonna figure out which one it is. The complainant's initials are N P. And you do, listen, it's going to be an extension.
Yeah, I guess I'll go back a step. Thank you Judy for reminding me. We, at our meeting on, not last time, the time before, so let me look at the date to get it right. At our meeting on April 19, we voted to request an extension from all three of the complainants. The complainant for the February 14, 2023 complaint granted that extension. The complainant for the March 8, 2023 complaint did not respond, which leaves us needing to treat it though we were not granted the extension. The complainant for the March 13, 2023 complaint requested that we process their complaint in a timely manner. They would like us to move forward with the complaint. So, yes Judy, the February 14, 2023 complaint was granted an extension. Michelle, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, I would like to move to dismiss this complaint from early February.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I don't know if you can hear me.
So Michelle moves to dismiss the complaint received on February 14. And Kirti Hasijah Kaufman seconds that motion. Is there discussion? Michelle, it's your complaint, so you can go first, but I see Alicia's ready to talk to you.
It is correct. Michelle goes first. It's her motion.
Um, the content of the complaint does not comply with, with our policies. I have, I'm sitting in a car right now, so I haven't, I don't have access to my notes, but from what I researched earlier, it's someone, it's someone filing a complaint on behalf of someone else, which seems very unusual to me. And in the last year and a half, the number of complaints that have come in have likely been unprecedented. And I think we should, um, I think we should discourage these types of complaints coming in.
Alicia, do you still want to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, my turn?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't disagree with Michelle that we should, we should figure out a way to discourage our behavior or clarity on our policies. And I don't know how we, to the Smiths, given our policy says, and it's very clear that we will investigate, we need to change this policy, but now we need to adhere to this policy. We need to follow our policy and fix it if it's not working. So I agree, but I want to follow our policy and therefore I can't, I will be voting against the motion to dismiss this complaint. Instead, I think we need to investigate as our policy says. I do say it.
Judy?
I think, I agree that we, I don't think we've answered the question of someone can file a complaint on behalf of someone else. I had that written down.
In K L A R, you can file a complaint on behalf of yourself or your child slash guardian over.
So that was good, because that was the question I asked, but I don't know that it was ever answered. So you think it's in there?
It is in there. Well, I can read it to you from K L A R. But you can keep going well on with the word.
Well, I mean, since, since we had an extension, I would, if that impact is true, we probably should dismiss it. If it's not true, then I agree, our current policy does say we investigate, but I'd like to figure out a way that we could stop all the complaints also that we're getting, so.
I'm sorry, you can't see me in the car too, but could somebody, does somebody have that policy in front, like the K L A R and the investigation one to be able to read?
I have books in front of me.
I'm also on the car, so I apologize for the protocol.
One second.
I just have a quick question. Did we have a legal opinion on this? That's what I want to know.
A legal opinion on the argument as to whether or not we should or would dismiss this? No, we do not have a legal opinion on this. We do have a strange intersection, however, between two policies.
Right.
K L indicates, K L indicates that we, that a person can only file a complaint on behalf of themselves or their student, whereas A C C indicates that you can file a complaint on behalf of someone else.
That's what I have here, and that's what I was looking at originally.
So I found the language in K L, just to, K L A R, just to read that out loud. It says complainants may file complaints on their own behalf or on behalf of their enrolled student or about district policies or practices. Complainants cannot file complaints on behalf of another person or student. And I'm looking for
I am the racial.
The language in the racial harassment policy. I'm sorry. It's right here. She has a circle. So this is reporting and administrative action upon receipt of a complaint. Number four says conduct a thorough, sensitive, and timely investigation. Is that what you're talking about, Alicia?
It says we'll investigate. Yes.
And then it also says, should an investigation not be completed within 10 workdays, an update should be provided to impacted persons.
So an investigation within 10 working days would be a district investigation?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how we do an outside investigation in 10 days.
It's not possible.
Andy's looking to see if it says that somewhere, that they can be made on some behalf. We have it noted, the ways they can be reported and including anonymous. But just to track that down. Judy?
I think that's the way it's being implemented right now in schools, but my suggestion would be since we got, and this is an interesting question, I think it would be worth learning about, since there is, seems to be a little bit of disconnect between the two policies, giving a legal opinion would be great. And if in fact, it does, it is not okay to do, I would be the first to say, let's dismiss it.
So does anybody else have anything to say about, I'd like to wait to see Dr. Dye finds that portion of the complaint before we make a formal vote. In the meantime.
Sorry, Mike, can you repeat that?
Dr. Dye is looking through policy A C C, the racial harassment policy, to see if it indicates that, that one can make a complaint on behalf of someone else. Okay. I know it says that teachers and staff who have knowledge of racial harassment are tasked with acting on that knowledge?
The language connotes that it does not need to be the person who is the possible victim of harassment, because it says that a teacher and a staff who know of this should take the responsible steps for implementing the policy.
Right.
So in this case, it would be difficult to say that the person, the complainant in this case, on the one hand, cannot file a complaint according to K L on behalf of another individual, but the language that's in this policy suggests that that is exactly what we would want in the event of racial harassment.
Right. And I'm just wanting to make sure we read that racial harassment policy the same in both areas of concern. So not reading into it, but reading it literally, which leads me back to the question of the investigation. Because if we're gonna look at it with a connotation, then that opens us up to doing the same for the other one? Does that make sense?
That one is by the person, so it eliminates the ambiguity.
This one was not by a person.
Right, this one was not, and I think we should play it out.
And neither are they a teacher or a staff member.
Right. Schools are having students file.
So another place, another place where we need to fix that policy.
I would want to look at the harassment policies that we have. I think it's more explicitly stated in, I don't remember the letters designated for that harassment policy.
The general harassment. I think it would be helpful if I'm the attorney, I think, we ought to, this is important.
So Michelle, Judy, do you want to, because this is the one that we have the liberty of time, do you want to make a friendly amendment?
I think I would change the motion to say, let's, so maybe we should vote on this one.
Table the vote?
Yeah. So I would move that we tabled the vote and for, and the motion would be to it, to address whether or not it's someone can file a complaint on behalf of someone else.
Okay. So Michelle, do you accept the amendment to table the motion until we can determine whether someone can file a complaint on behalf of someone else?
Okay, so if a complaint is filed under A C C, which seems specific to incidents that are within schools, is that correct?
No, it says that encompasses everything outside of schools, any school related. It would definitely encompass board readings and board behavior too. It's pretty broad.
And that would be, that would be A C C?
A C C, yes.
And so this, this complaint from February 14 would would fall under policy A C C and not K L?
That's, yeah, that's the legal question.
Okay.
I, I do want to, can I, I don't mean to interrupt you, Michelle, I just wanted to.
No, you're not. I'm, I'm, I yeah, I was, I was looking at the complaint according to policy K L.
Yeah. So Dr. Dye, then I'll go after you.
In A C C, it also indicates that reports may be made anonymously, and in the event of an anonymous report, we wouldn't know whether or not it was the student or the student's parent slash guardian, and we would be obligated by the language of the policy to investigate. We can certainly rely on the opinion of legal counsel, but I would have believed that, given the language that we have in our policies to date, I anticipate that the most prudent response would be to investigate and then to look at ways to change the policy to eliminate the ambiguity.
I just want to bring back to the, to the discussion we had in session regarding these complaints, and we also talked about the actual content of the complaint and the resolution suggested, one being that we have failed to protect our fellow board member by continuing not to implement recommendations provided by security in that they continue to feel unsafe in their own home, and their resolution suggested is mediation, which was offered and rejected, and paid security on four J board members. So I think, does that matter to us if we have done what they're saying we haven't done? I think we still need to answer those questions regardless if we can fix our policy. Or do we revisit that after we have that information, the other informations? Michelle?
Matt, quite what a whole.
Yeah.
Michelle has spoken twice on a motion, and that's our policy is to speak twice and then take a vote whether people can speak more, correct?
Sure.
That's our policy. So I just, we make these and then we don't stick to them.
So do you have something?
Nope, I'm just pointing that out.
Okay.
Michelle.
Does anybody else have anything to point out or that hasn't spoken twice? I know I've spoken twice now. Judy has, Michelle has. So Kirti or Alicia?
Nope. I mean, I don't mind tabling the vote till we get a clarity on that, on the the policy.
Do we want to extend discussion so anyone else who has anything else to add can have an opportunity to do so? Is there any objection to extending the discussion?
Does our policy say we will vote, or we just do without objection?
I'm not sure. If they would like to be on the safe side, let's break it to a vote. Do you want to make that motion?
Nope, I'm good.
Do you want to make that motion?
That we can extend the conversation?
Are we, are we not in the middle of a motion?
Alicia pointed out that we need to, not do it without objection. So Judy has moved to extend the conversation. Is there a second? Michelle, are you raising your hand to second it?
I am.
So Judy moves to extend the conversation, and Michelle seconded that. Is there a discussion about discuss, extending discussion? All right, there's no discussion. All those in favor of extending the discussion, raise your hands and say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously with ayes from Maya Ravassa, Alicia Hayes, Kirti Hasijah Kaufman, and Michelle Shu. Michelle, you had your hand raised. Would you like to share your thoughts?
Yeah, um, I feel pretty strongly that the content of the complaint and previous complaints by, by moving forward to to investigate, you know, that, that takes time, effort, and money, and we have, I don't know if any other board has invested so much in complaints that don't seem, that, that may not be valid. When Kirti and I joined last year, we spent a lot of time immediately on complaints and going back and looking at them, especially the ones having to do with racism. They didn't seem like valid complaints to me, and they were, they were validated. And this is one complaint that's, to me, it doesn't seem like it just, it's just, it just doesn't, it's not a complaint that I would, would invest any further time or funds into. I think district funds are better spent on students and educators.
Judy?
So I think the reason I would support moving ahead to at least get a legal reading about what is, what, what, when can we hear third party complaints, when is it okay to really sort of put that issue ahead? Because I think if I heard that it wasn't okay, we would dismiss the complaint based on, we shouldn't be hearing this complaint. But we still have the option then to just, let's say, okay, we should be hearing it, and then we have the discussion, do we dismiss it as unfounded, which is sort of, I think, what you're saying, Michelle, or we do an investigation or do something else? That's, that to me is, the first step is to understand, because I think what we learn from that would help us even in the future, know how to proceed with these.
I'm gonna, oh, you go, no, you go first, I'll go after you.
Okay, well, I can't disagree about time, money, cost, and board's time. But we passed a badly, a poorly written policy, and now, I believe it was poorly written. I think it was quickly written. Some people may, on this board, have been part of it. But you cannot argue with number four. And if we don't follow our policy, what happens? Do we get to tell administrators, don't worry about that kid, because I don't think they're, they wrote a very good report of what happened? Or do we get to tell some staff person, well, we aren't really going to investigate, because, you know, I just, I'm reading it and it just doesn't, doesn't seem like racism to me. This is all contrary to why I believe we passed this policy, and why I believe I voted for this policy. I 100% agree, 100% agree, you got to fix this policy. But at the beginning, you talked about school board members being part of it, and number four says you will conduct an investigation, and we're way behind. I would be very supportive of looking at an opinion from legal counsel about whether a third party can file a grievance, or whether they think that number four really means conducting investigation. And that's where I would put my time, energy, and resource right now for that clarity on this one. But, you know, Michelle, you make good points. I agree. Unfortunately, we have a policy that I believe doesn't give us that flexibility.
I agree that number four is very clear, but I think that before we even get to number four, we need to look at the beginning of the policy, which is the purpose and scope, as well as the definitions, expectations, and consequences. And I'll let you guys read through that. Do you have it, Judy?
That's fine.
But I don't, I, I'm unsure whether, what this complaint is about falls under the scope and purpose that this policy was intended to cover. The complaint specifically references safety at home. And I'll give you guys a few minutes to look at it. I don't know, Michelle and Kirti, if you want me to read it, or if you.
No, but I'd like to speak if, uh, if I'm in the queue.
Please do.
Um, I'm personally with like getting to an agreement on if we're just making the motion to extend it, like get the legal opinion on it and honestly not waste any of our time right now, if resources on further this discussion, until we know that we have something to discuss, frankly, like at this point. I think everyone knows my opinion on, I'd much rather spend the time and money and resources of our, of all of the district on not focused on us and focusing it on other pieces of our district, like our children and our teachers. But I do believe that if we can just get that initial clarity, but Maya also agree with you that we look at the first two, one, two, three, before we get to the four, and make sure that they're valid on those accounts as well.
Right. I think it's important to look at that purpose and scope. If we're going to be, like, are we just processing it as a racial harassment complaint because that's how it's noted, or does this actually get covered under our policy?
And y'all, I'm just switching back to my phone, so I may lose you for a second.
Focus on law enforcement work. They also joined some 25.
Should I read it out loud for those who don't have it, or are we, the section of the policy regarding scope and purpose of the policy? Right. Can you say that matters to everyone?
I just said, under type of complaint, discrimination, race, ethnicity, or check, bullying with underlying, it says, the technical one, harassment, intimidation, and cyberbullying are all marked. I, I take it, so we have this complaint, and we can pick about what is said and the words that are used and all of that. What makes me nervous about that is whoever files a complaint better be a good writer and better be very clear in their writing. Because if they, we're gonna look at that versus we're gonna look at these first, and they say, I have this complaint because of this, are we going to allow administrators and others, and are we going to allow ourselves to judge what they write before we move it forward? Because that just, I don't know, that makes me really nervous, particularly when it comes to a policy about racial harassment. So I'll go with whatever the board wants. I say we take the vote, we see where we are, and we move forward from there.
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable linking, like, writing to the racial harassment. I think that that would be the case for all of our complaints. I think writing quality has nothing to do with it. It is about the content of the complaint, from my point.
Well, when I say writing quality, I mean content, so appreciate you clearing that.
But, but if the content of the complaint is about someone's experience in their home, is that covered by our racial harassment complaint?
Let me take one more. If our behavior at this board meeting causes people to be fearful in their home, then yes, it is. Yes, absolutely it is.
So I guess we're, and and Michelle, I apologize because we continued a discussion without you ever indicating if you accepted that friendly amendment. But I think that's where we're left is do you accept the friendly amendment that we receive legal counsel on whether, I think Judy, you were specifically focused on the question of
a third party and you know, there's a lot of questions we're raising that need clarifying, I think. You know, we have a complaint that the person writing the complaint marked it's racial harassment and it's cyberbullying. I mean, and so can we second guess that?
Right.
And, you know, so I think there are probably three or four questions in there. But yes, I specifically said about the third party.
Michelle, do you agree to table the motion to dismiss until after we've had a chance to receive legal counsel?
I accept, and I hope that we can receive counsel as soon as possible so we can resolve this. And and I want to I want to emphasize that I am looking at the content more than you know, number four on a policy.
Okay. In that case, all those in favor of tabling the original motion to dismiss this complaint until after we receive legal counsel regarding whether a third party can file a complaint? Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Kyrie, I'm not sure if you heard me call that.
I'm an aye, sorry.
No, no worries. Okay, so that passes unanimously. The motion is tabled until we can receive legal counsel regarding the third party filing of the complaint with ayes from Maya Rabasa, Judy Newman, Alicia Hayes, Kyrie Hasidja Kaufman, and Michelle Shu. All right, one down, two to go. The next complaint was filed on March 8, 2023. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Alicia?
I move that we follow our policy as written under racial harassment ACC and do an investigation on this complaint.
Is there a second? A second. Alicia moves to do an investigation on this complaint. And Judy Newman seconds that. Is there any discussion?
I feel like we've had a lot of discussion on this, so I'm going to pass.
Is there any other discussion or if not, we'll move it to a vote? All those in favor of hiring an investigator to investigate this complaint? Raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Kyrie, are you an a or a nay on that one?
I'm a nay, actually.
Well, the motion fails because there's only three ayes or two nays. Is there another motion somebody would like to make regarding this complaint? Michelle?
I I move to dismiss this complaint. But seeing how there are only five of us, I'm not sure it's productive to go around in circles with this.
So Michelle moves to dismiss this complaint. Is there a second? Judy Newman seconds it?
I'd like to hear.
So the motion is to dismiss the complaint. As moved by Michelle Shu, seconded by Judy Newman. Is is there a discussion? Michelle, you do get to go first if you'd like, but
Um. I can comment. We had previously dismissed complaints of similar nature. And I believe this additional complaint is retaliatory.
Alicia, do you have something? Does anybody else have any comments or questions? I'll comment. And my first comment is that this is another illustration of us needing to look at our policy. Seeing that it's a board member filing a complaint against another board member. And our precedent-setting practice so far has been that we are allowing ourselves to be involved in those complaints. Which we clearly need to clarify in our policy if that's the intention we want. When a complaint is filed against a board member by another board member. To me, what this ends up looking like is hiring an investigator to determine whether actions were taken with the intention of inflicting harm based on a protected status. Because it's my understanding that the actions that are outlined in this complaint are supported by our policy resolution and Robert's rules. So I'm moving my comment back. Alicia?
Thanks, mine. That's making nail to the shoe very well. And I can wait till they end of the meeting to do this, but I also would just ask maybe for clarification from legal about the very thing we're grappling with. If if number four outweighs or plays over other things, I don't know if I'm saying that right. Do you guys understand? Do people understand what I'm saying?
Number four supersedes the other
Yeah, like if four is in there, do we have to? And I think that would be real. Because that's what I'm going off of in the research I did. And if I'm wrong, um, I think it would be very helpful for all of us to know.
Right.
Not that I'm wrong, but clarity on that would be very helpful for all of us to know.
And my, I mean, we've already, the motion to investigate has died.
Yeah.
But my question then would be, who investigates whether actions that were following our policy were taken with the intention of causing harm? How do we find agreement on who could answer that question?
I'm sorry. I believe that's all things the board needs to deal with. Those are very good questions.
Judy? And to your point, because I have looked in the policies and I don't think there's anything that would give us guidance about one board member being either named in the complaint and then being part of the deliberation or so they're really, so I mean, I think that would be something that would behoove us to get clarification about because it's never felt right, but never found legal guidance on that. So
I think it's not even a question of legal guidance. It's a question of us developing policy.
Yeah, well, developing policy, and I would do that with legal guidance is all I'm saying, but and that might not even be relevant right now, except you raised that as a question. And I'm just saying, I don't think it exists right now.
I having issues raising my hand, but I'm in queue in case.
Please leave.
I am already dismissed largely on validity, especially because the thing is asking us to establish intent. And I don't think any investigation is ever going to get to that way to that thing here. And I'm loathe to actually spend time and money and resources on things that we've all agreed to and have invalidated in the past and set precedent with.
Michelle, can I make a friendly amendment of moving to dismiss but following up the complaint by developing policy around how we handle board-on-board complaints?
Yes. I accept that.
I think everyone except for
Got to get an agreement in a second. I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Friendly amendment would be to move to dismiss with follow-up action being developing policy regarding how to handle board-on-board complaints.
And that was accepted.
Michelle?
Michelle. I just, I was busy reading. Andy pointed this out. So it would be the policy seeks to prevent and prohibit all forms of racially harassing conduct in district programs and activities, even if the conduct does not include an intent to harm. It's not directed at a specific target, involve repeated incidents, results, and tangible injuries. So that's sort of an interesting an investigation would not be looking for intent to harm then in this policy in the way it's written.
So then the investigation would be looking at the actual complaints.
I guess, yeah.
Right, which we can substantiate by looking at Robert's rules, our policy, our resolution as being supported. So do you accept the the amendment?
We can do a two. Does that mean I have to vote yes on it?
No, it means that you accept the friendly amendment to see the motion that is on the table.
Okay, yes, I do.
So does that start our two comments all over?
I didn't, I didn't vote for that.
All right. I'm going to declare that we have a new motion on the table and amended motion on the table, which gives us two more comments each. If this is the new amended motion on the table, does anybody have any comments regarding the motion to dismiss with the follow-up action of developing policy regarding board-on-board complaints, Alicia?
So I'm going to have to vote no on this because I don't agree, given our current policy and the way that it's written, that we should be dismissing it. I really would like to vote for your friendly amendment because I think that's really important. And if this goes down, I would hope you would make that as a standalone amendment. Thanks.
If it goes down, then I'm going to make it.
No, you can make that amendment. It'll be clear this out like you've done that.
Not if it's part of losing motion.
You can just make it.
Not if it's part of losing motion. Part of Robert's rules, but only the people involved in the winning side of the motion can read this in a motion.
Thank you. I meant like, you know, when we say at the end of the meeting, hey, will you go get this clarity? Not so much emotion, but just a clarification. So, no, I appreciate that. You are correct. You get us.
Are there any other comments?
My only comment is you'll clarify that what we're voting on. To dismiss the complaint and to then get advice about
to develop
policy about
Our policy to include complaints and stuff. Board on board complaints.
Okay. That's right.
Any more comments? Or questions? Okay, well, in that case, all those in favor of dismissing the complaint but following up with action around developing our policy to include how to handle board-on-board complaints? Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Kyrie, you'll forgive me, but I don't know if you said aye or nay.
No, I'm an aye on this. I'm having like Zoom just updated, so I apologize.
So the motion dies again with five votes from Maya Rabasa, Kyrie Hasidja Kaufman, Michelle Shu, and may votes from Judy Newman and Alicia Hayes. Do we try again or what do we do with this? I've never experienced this.
In this case, the board can take no action.
Okay. So because we have two failed motions and no more motions to put on the table unless somebody wants to speak up? The board is taking no action on this complaint. Our last complaint is complaint number three, which was submitted on March 13, 2023. Somebody like to make a motion? Judy?
I move that we investigate this complaint. Because I actually, just from what's written, I I think I need more information to make an informed decision. Not having been part of it, that's what I would look.
Is there a second? So Judy moves to investigate the complaint and Kyrie Hasidja Kaufman seconds that motion. Is there discussion? I'll put myself in the queue then. I also would like more information. I'm struggling with whether that looks like an investigation or a hearing. Not sure what would be investigated. And a hearing would allow us to participate in asking questions. And would give both the complainant and the respondent the opportunity to expand on their input and response. But I would love to hear from my fellow board members when investigation or a hearing. Michelle? Michelle?
Has an investigation within the district occurred? Or did, or not because it was involving a board member?
No investigation has occurred because it came directly to us.
It came directly to us?
Yes, it's a complaint by an employee against a board member.
Do we know the willingness of the parties to participate in a hearing?
Um, I, I don't. I'm not sure that. I don't, I don't know. I don't know what happens. I mean, to me, we make the decision to have a hearing if that's what we want and then it gives them the opportunity. Or it gives us a chance to deliberate more, I suppose, if nobody shows up.
I've never participated. Were you calling them either?
Yes.
I've never participated in a hearing, but it just feels like we have an employee and we have a board member. Would the hearing have to be public and what would that even entail? That's why I went for an investigation, someone that actually has an expertise and could do something a little more discreet. That's my worries. I don't even know what a hearing would look like and are we the judge and jury? Is a board member a part of that? So I don't know what I'd gain from a hearing.
The board member would be part of it because as it stands now, we don't have policy that would prohibit them and board members have been involved in all the deliberations surrounding complaints against them until now, so.
So I'd be, I would not be in favor of a hearing for those reasons.
Does anybody have any more input? The motion on the table, to be clear, is to begin an investigation. Which in and of itself doesn't preclude us from following up with a hearing.
True.
Although the clock is ticking. No other comments or questions? In that case, all those in favor of initiating an investigation of this complaint, raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, raise your hands and say nay.
Nay.
And.
And I'm an aye.
You're an aye. So the motion fails with three ayes and two nays. Ayes came from Maya Rabasa, Judy Newman and Kyritha Hasidja Kaufman. The nays came from Alicia Hayes and Michelle Shu. Someone have another investigation, another motion to make regarding this complaint? Well, I'll move to have a hearing. Does anybody second that?
I'll second.
Okay, so Maya Rabasa moves to have a hearing regarding this complaint. And Michelle Shu seconds that. Is there any comments or questions? I'll go first. I I think it would be really unfortunate for us not to process this complaint given that it is an employee complaining as a kind of board member. I think that would be a really detrimental message to be giving our employees. Specifically when at least one of the listed things directly violates our, what our, our policy. So we rejected a investigation. And I encourage us to not let this just sit and go unprocessed.
Can I put myself on the queue?
Why don't you go ahead?
I agree. I would want to continue to like more information and I think, correct me if I'm wrong with the hearing, like we give the opportunity, right, to the the complainants and to be able to have that.
Yes, the complainant responded, have a chance to speak. And then we have a chance to ask any questions that we'd like. And then we revisit where we are right now with more information.
I think they should be given the opportunity to be heard.
Can I go?
Alicia?
I, I think that sounds great since we have a past practice of not doing that. Maybe you guys were, many people were not on the board at the time. But yeah, similar situation. Anyway, I think it's very, we did not investigate and we did not have a hearing. Maybe the person didn't ask for it, but I felt like I felt like they also had the option, they had some other options that were given to them. So I'm, this is very confusing to me because it seems like, it just seems very confusing and what is good for one person, if you agree with them, it's good. If you don't, it's just, it's kind of muddy. And so I can't move forward with this given how that, how the last one was treated that I didn't agree with. And we were very public with that one, so I don't want to say more. But board members who are here, I hope you have a good recollection of that.
Yeah, go ahead Judy and then I'll go right after.
I just have, I have a question because I would agree to move ahead with one hearing and not, is no action, is that our action? We're done with it, the day goes and we just took no action.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And that leads me to my point, which was we did take action on the other one. We didn't let it just sit and we also deliberated over that one repeatedly. This one, I don't think we've given it the same amount of attention.
To them. We didn't have a hearing though.
We had a hearing scheduled and then did not have it. Also that one, all of the deliberation took place in executive session. So we really can't talk about that one.
What? And so that's what's confusing is not, why this one? And that one was difficult, but I, I know.
I mean, I can answer regarding why that one was an executive session and this one's a public meeting. And that is the interpretation of the law shifted. We had been advised by Christine Hasit to take that one into, and there was also, if I'm not mistaken, that other one included a connection to a grievance and a tort claims notice. So there was legal concerns as well as employment action that was connected to it. This one is strictly a complaint, not connected to a request regarding employment law.
And correct me if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but the person that was being complained about wanted, they probably wanted that. And did we check with the person?
I, I think we probably are getting into what we talked about in public, meaning in executive session.
No, I'm just asking about past practice. I thought that was the past practice. If I'm wrong. But that was what I remember.
Right, and I worry about that we're getting into what we talked about in executive session.
When we are using names, it's just past practice, so.
Okay, Judy?
Well, that's, I won't go further into it. I think, I remember how that played out, but I think we got legal advice about how to proceed with that. So that if the complainant asks for a hearing, then they get the hearing, I think. But I don't know. That's, I mean, that was, it seems like we got some legal advice. But I do have a question related to this. It's not so clear and cut and dry to me. I know we violated this, but what plays into this because it was a private, by invitation only Facebook group? And that's really different to me. I don't, I don't know if it's different. I have a legal question about that. It's not so clear to me because people are accepted in and there were apparently 198 people accepted in. And then no one else saw. I, I, I don't, I don't know if that's another factor on how that plays into our policy and social media, if it's private or not, so.
Our policy. The policy states when using social media websites, board members will treat and refer to other board members, staff, students and the public with respect.
I'm very familiar with that policy.
I know, I'm just repeating it because I don't know if the other two board members have it in front of them. Do you want to say something, Alicia? So I don't think it specifies.
It doesn't. I agree, and that's why I wanted to do an investigation.
And I think the only thing that's, that's similar with this and the previous one is that as an employee and a board member, the previous one was very specifically about employment. It cited a completely different. It cited a hostile work environment.
I think that was part of it, but I mean.
That was the premise of it. That was what we received.
I have to get legal, I mean, that's not the way I remember it. I do hear what you're saying, but I remember the the facts around it being very similar. That's all. So I'll leave it at that.
Right.
I.
Michelle?
The only similarity is that it's a complaint by an employee on a board member. Otherwise, I don't think that we should be making false equivalences because the situation is very different. I know that, you know, people like to talk about precedents and making decisions now based on what was done before, but what happened last year was, was not only muddy, it was messy. And, and we did have legal counsel at that time, so. I, I, I know it's difficult to remember what happens in executive session, which is good in some ways. But in this case, the details within the complaint are very clear.
Does anybody have anything else they want to add? Because if we do, we need to vote to extend the discussion. Okay, well, all those in favor of holding a hearing to learn more about this complaint, raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, raise your.
Sorry, I am an aye.
Okay, all those opposed, raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
All right, this motion does not move or this complaint unless somebody has another motion to put on the table. I'm sorry, before I say that, the motion fails with a three to two vote with ayes for Maya Rabasa, Kyritha Hasidja Kaufman and Michelle Shu and nays from Judy Newman and Alicia Hayes. Does anybody else have another motion to put on the table?
Discussion.
Discussion before the motion?
Yeah.
You don't want to just make a motion and then we discuss?
My motion would be, I need, I need the collective wisdom of the group. Can I have a little leeway?
Yes, ma'am.
Maya moved me, brought up some really good points about the investigation and employee. It's not moved by not using precedents or policy. I still believe in that. And I'm wondering what we need to do here. We need clarity on whether there was a violation in its behavior because it was a closed group, all of those questions that came up. So I don't know if it's an investigation and collective wisdom group. Is it an inquiry about from our attorneys whether, given the facts that we have, policy as written was violated? Can we do something like that? Sometimes I feel like we're out here floating without an attorney.
I, I don't know how we could say that policy as written wasn't violated.
I, I, well.
Because policy, and we're looking at all, like, we just spent so much time looking at the racial harassment policy and despite knowing the intention behind it, we stuck with the wording. And now we have wording here and we are going to disregard that one of our fellow board members violated a policy.
Well, we did, we already did that as a board. We already said we weren't going to listen to policy. So we is with the racial harassment policy.
We didn't say that.
Well, we did because I believe four says we should investigate and you disagreed. So that's already happened. So we're kind of in, I don't want to say we're in the same place, but we are in the same place. I'm just trying to figure out how we move something forward. I guess we don't and we can just let it go and they have other options.
I don't know what their other options are.
I don't, I don't either.
I don't know. I think we just told an employee that it's okay that they were treated disrespectfully on social media.
And we've been telling, unfortunately, I'm just going to say it, we've been telling employees that for the last year and a half.
We have.
So why, so that's where precedents like, the reason that precedence matters is because sometimes it stops a past, past pattern of behavior.
I, I wish I believed that, but if that means then all the arguments about we're opening ourselves up to these complaints, all of this, we aren't following policy, we didn't follow policy, I'd go back and I would vote for an investigation if it came back up.
But I'm not sure we can.
Anyway, guess it changes. It is what it was.
No.
I think we're struggling as a board to figure this out and I think that's what I hope employees understand. We are struggling. Because board members have gone after board members on social media and it's, you know.
No, well, let's use it.
Never mind. I shouldn't have said that. I'm backing off on that.
No, it's okay, but if we're going to say things like that, let's make sure we're not misrepresenting by, by using plurals on both sides of it.
I went after a board member.
No, you did. A board member has gone after board members.
A board member.
I, I think our only other option, and maybe it's not, and I'll put it on the table for conversation because I don't think it's, it makes me uncomfortable to continue discussing without having a motion on the table. But the only other motion I can think of is that we move to issue a statement of censure. Because like you said, for a year and a half, this policy has been violated. So I'm going to, I'm going to do that and then let's have our conversation. So I move to issue a statement of censure. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so Maya Rabasa moves to issue a statement of censure and Michelle Shu seconds it. I'm going to go first because it is my motion and it's not one that I'm happy to make. I would have liked to have handled this in a different way, but I'm not sure how else we communicate that, that we are not okay with this policy continuing to be violated. Doesn't have any weight other than communicating to our staff that as a body, we're not okay with this behavior. Are there any other comments? Judy?
Just feel in general out of my league on all these complaints. I'm just saying. Just feel in general out of my league on all these complaints. I'm just saying, I mean, there's, there are issues of free speech, there's issues. And we've looked at other, people look at these policies in different ways, and I agree, sometimes they seem very clear, sometimes they don't. I don't really even understand the idea of a closed, you know, to me, this is grayer because it's a closed group. So I, I just feel really out of my league. And to issue a statement of censure, I want to be really clear. And I don't have that, which is why I was saying at least someone, if it was an investigator with some skills to help us see all the issues that we aren't even seeing would be helpful. So I can't support that because I, I don't even know what door that's opening. And I do have concerns about that.
Are there any other comments? Can I friendly amend my own? Go ahead, Michelle. I guess I can. Go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if this can be just specifically between the complainant and respondent. I, I, I really, I really don't know. As Maya had stated earlier, I do not want to silence an employee who has made a very clear case. And I don't know what your amendment would be, Maya. But I'm curious to hear.
I would revise my motion to table a statement of censure, the motion to issue a statement of censure following receiving legal counsel on whether this violated. What is it? BDF. BDF. So I would, I would move to table that motion until we can receive counsel. I just, I'm also grasping for straws because I really am uncomfortable continuing to, regardless of precedents, because sometimes we make decisions and then we go home and we're like, how did I make that decision? And we should be able to grow from our mistakes and, and make the right decision in the future and not continue to keep making the wrong decision just because we did once. So I'm just sitting here really.
I'm, sorry.
Go ahead, Kirti.
I was going to say I'd be in favor of getting, I'd be, I'd be fine with getting additional counsel on this.
I, I was going to say, Michelle, I think you need to just second that if you're okay with that revision.
I second that. I'm okay with that revision.
Alicia?
I like the second part. I think that's where I wanted to go. I'm not okay with the censure sitting out there on the table, so I won't vote yes for that, but I will vote definitely yes. We get an amendment, or we get a new motion with that second part, I think. That's what I was looking for.
Sorry, I'd like to amend that too. I was also, I was voting on the counsel, I thought, and not the thing, so I just wanted to make sure that, Alicia, thanks for clarifying that.
So then for that. Okay, and to be clear, the statement of censure would be revisited, obviously, because we would be tabling it. So.
Can you just repeat the full motion?
The full motion is to table action on issuing a statement of censure until after we've had the opportunity to receive consultation with legal counsel. Judy?
Can we vote that down and then just look for legal counsel? I don't have, I don't feel comfortable having them linked together either.
I think so. I mean, the motion dies, so none of us are technically on the quote unquote winning side of the motion. But I suppose if it's by itself, I don't.
And the legal counsel might give us some other avenues that might be even more effective, so I don't want to have it necessarily linked to a motion on censure.
So then I think we can, or please speak up and tell me if I'm not interpreting the process correctly. But I can revise my motion to simply be requesting legal counsel. I'm just really worried that if we take this to a vote and it dies, then we can't bring it back in any form. But can I revise it to remove that initial part and leave it as legal counsel?
A friendly amendment to the friendly amendment?
I think it's a revision because it's coming from me.
Then I say, and you vote in agreement.
Honestly, at this point, like I said, I'm grasping at straws. I don't want this to just. Okay, then I re-revise my motion to table action on this complaint pending consultation with legal counsel. Michelle, do you re-read second?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion now stands as tabling action on this complaint pending a consultation with legal counsel. As moved by Maya Abassa and seconded by Michelle Shu. Is there any more discussion? Okay, in that case, uh, all those in favor, I'm just trying to remember how I worded it, all those in favor of tabling action on the complaint pending a consultation with legal counsel. Raise your hand and say aye.
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 Look at that. The motion passes unanimously with ayes from Maya Abassa, Judy Newman, Alicia Hayes, Kirti Hasija Kaufman, and Michelle Shu. With that, I announce that our next regular board meeting is scheduled for May 17th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is adjourned at 6:23 PM.